To order, today is Wednesday, July the 12th. The time is nine o'clock a.m. We have a very short, very brief agenda, but we'll probably be here for five days. So, let's get started. Is planning and zoning comprehensive plan gonna go first? Or is parks and rec gonna go first?
I'm sorry. Good morning, everybody. Yeah, the comp plan discussion, if we could, that'd be shorter.
Oh, okay.
And that way we'll have just more time to meander through the parks discussion. Because that's, you know, it's a broader subject in the short term. Long term, no, but.
I just saw parks folks here, didn't know who did.
So, Mayor, I'd like Michaela and I, Michaela's the expert on the comp plan. And I would like for her to introduce the subject and kind of steer you all towards what you need to be thinking about in front of next week's meeting with the joint, the joint cities and counties that are inside of the jurisdiction of our planning and zoning. And so I would like to introduce Michaela again to the group and give her the floor to start that conversation with you. And so it's really a bit, a little bit unrehearsed and unplanned, but really, like I said, I want you all to start thinking in that direction. Is that fair, Michaela? Yeah.
All right. So essentially, we are planning a meeting for next Tuesday, July 18th. It's going to start at nine a.m. now, rather than the eight a.m. that was discussed. So, nine to four approximately. But the goal is to get all four jurisdictions, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. The goal is to get all four jurisdictions talking and basically going through a visioning exercise. The comprehensive plan is a 20-year vision for Boyle County. And so that's, that's the goal of next Tuesday. The goal of this workshop is just to get you all talking, to basically go through that exercise with Danville. And the goal is to come up with what your thoughts are for what Danville should be in 20 years from now. So reflecting on what we are today and then where we want to be in 20 years. That is the goal of the comprehensive plan. And then my job is to try and implement it and get us to that point. I did hand out a sheet. The Bluegrass ad is gonna be the one running the meeting next Tuesday, and they are the ones writing the comprehensive plan. This was just some really informal thoughts from Joe Black. He's the planner that's gonna be working on the comprehensive plan. So that's kind of an informal agenda for what next Tuesday is gonna look like. But mostly my job here is to let you all talk and just throw out some ideas of, you know, some strengths and weaknesses of Boyle County, and then some ideas of what you want to be in 20 years from now, if that makes sense.
Hey, I'm gonna, this has always kind of confused me. We've never been in on this part of the process before. So could you just kind of, what is and what is it the comprehensive plan? I mean, you say it's a 20-year plan, or what, what topics are included, I guess, or what subjects are included?
Okay. So KRS requires that we do land use, transportation, and community facilities, and goals and objectives. Goals and objectives is what the legislative bodies approve. So I will be going around to each, each of the jurisdictions, and they'll have to adopt the goals and objectives. But otherwise, the comprehensive plan can just be adopted as a full document by the planning commission. So like I said, those are the required elements of the comprehensive plan. So looking at that land use and then future land use, that's what's primarily used to make zone, zone change decisions. But then transportation, so you would be looking at some long-term transportation projects, what our current transportation infrastructure looks like, community facilities, so that would be utilities, as well as parks, schools, libraries, things like that. And then goals and objectives, like I discussed. But we typically include other elements. Let me check this before I get them all wrong. But we, we also include housing and historic preservation, environmental conditions, economic conditions, and then an implementation section. So that will be a discussion that we have as we move forward on this, as to what other elements we want to include. Most other comprehensive plans throughout the state include additional elements. So I think, you know, there's important other things that you look at. But for where the comprehensive plan has teeth is it guides zone change decisions. That's the biggest thing. But it's also supposed to be a policy driver. So the zoning ordinance is what we actually use to enforce regulations, and it helps kind of guide and enforce development. But the comprehensive plan is supposed to be that vision for it. So it's supposed to be the policy driver that's driven by you all, by the legislative bodies, and then the public, to come up with that shared vision. And then it's my job to look back on the zoning ordinance and our subdivision regulations, which are our regulatory documents, and make sure that they're help, they help implement that plan, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you very much. That helps. Everybody else may have known that.
You said public, so do the public have a, do you have a certain day for them to?
Yeah. I don't have my calendar in front of me. I think August 24th.
Okay.
Is that right? It's gonna be the public kickoff meeting.
Okay.
Which we'll start advertising for, and we'll start putting the word out. This really, the goal of the next meeting on Tuesday is really just to help us guide that discussion with the public. It's supposed to get your all's input to help the ad learn what's going on with Boyle County, what's important to you all. And it's really supposed to help guide that discussion to get the public involved. It's, you know, we're gonna have a series of public engagement meetings at the forefront to go through that visioning exercise, similar to what we're gonna be doing with you all. And then once we get drafts of the document, we'll continue to get public input on the actual draft. So it's important to get community buy-in. This is really just supposed to be that precursor, so we have a better understanding of what, what we need to be focused on looking at, what aspects we need to be engaging the public on, things like that, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I think just the last round, I always felt like there could be more advertising. So definitely work with Melanie and getting the word out for all the public opportunities.
Yeah.
So I would even reach out to realtor groups and everything, you know? Just actually reach out, because I'd like to see everybody involved this time.
Yeah, yeah, me too. So I, I don't know what the ad's vision is, but Josh and I have certainly talked about kind of getting materials from the ad and maybe trying to do some more focus group discussions, like neighborhood groups, things like that, to further try and get additional public input, so.
Other comments or questions?
The thing that oftentimes is questioned when you're doing zone changes and development is the infrastructure. And, and regardless, and so there's a lot of emphasis. When you go through the document over the next few days, there's a lot of emphasis on transportation features and utilities and things like that. So when you're going through the comp plan, there needs to be an alignment of development with the infrastructure, and then public buy-in. So, so the public may see something, say, well, we really want something here. But then when you go to the, the meetings, the public's concerned about transportation or the lack thereof and access, and or the lack of utilities, is sewer taken care of? Are these, so, so you, you as a board have the unique perspective of aligning what the public believes for development, and you all have to reconcile that between the public infrastructure side, right? And, and so you all play a critical role in the development of the comp plan, because you're trying to align some of the ideas espoused by the public and what is possible from an infrastructure perspective. And I've thought about how to word that, but that's the cleanest way I can say it. And that, that's a hard, that's a hard lift, but you are trying to align those two goals in ways. Is that fair?
Yes, that's fair. And then also what the ad should provide is what's part of the comprehensive plan process is a base study. So you look at where our demographics and everything are now, and then you do projections 20 years from now. And you're supposed to do that with land use as well. So that will give us a better sense of, okay, we need an additional 200 acres of commercial area, or industrial, or residential, et cetera. And so I'll give you guys some sense of parameters of, okay, this is how much we need to accommodate for 20 years of growth. And then we start that discussion of where we actually want that growth to happen. And that, a big part of that is infrastructure and where we can actually accommodate it, but.
Yeah, and then you all would, would affirm, yes, there's gonna be traffic changes. So what's our policy to account for those traffic changes? Or what is, what is our, how are we going to deal with that? Right, like, so you all play a critical role in that process.
Yes.
You know?
And, and I guess the overall goal when this is finished is that as officials, as community folks, as folks coming into our community, we have a very clear vision about how we want this community to expand and to grow, or not to grow, whatever.
Yeah, wherever the comp plan takes us, but yes, yeah.
So that ultimately, on the backside of the comp plan, if they, if someone comes to town and they say, we want to build something somewhere, then the public generally is aware on how transportation, they can't just sit there and say, well, transportation's gonna be a disaster, we can't do this. Well, they, they have an understanding that you all have already pre-considered transportation, and you have a solution for how things are gonna be processed, so as to mitigate that in the future. Because no matter what happens, transportation, it, you're either intercepting traffic to service it where the development is happening, or you're getting trip generation. And, and so like, those are two different things, but most of the time, the public don't look at it like that. They look at everything as like, where you're just creating more traffic. Not necessarily. A lot of commercial enterprises intercepts traffic and prevents it from being somewhere else, you know? So that's a, I, you know, that's complicated.
And I know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go first.
I was just gonna say, I noticed on this map, we'll have to add the new, or the annexed area that we.
Yes, that, that map certainly needs to be updated. But.
Do we have a more current map, or is it, it will just be included in the new comp plan?
Yeah, for existing and then future, we'll do new maps. They'll have to be updated, yeah. So this is our most current map right now, is adopted in 2017. But my understanding is, I think it was a carryover from 2011, essentially. So it's, it's out to date, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great question, great answer, too, because as we look at it, it can be important to know where we are right now, to plan out for the, you keep saying 20 years, but if it, if it keeps us going for 10 years, I'd be really excited about it.
Yeah.
But you had a question.
Yeah, I had a question. So I was looking at a few more back, 9.1.
Okay.
And I guess referring to what Earl brought up, the municipal utility service boundary. Is that what we're gonna use as engineering-wise, where I guess that's existing? Will we also have a line that developers will know how far they can go out?
Well, the, so that's a good topic. On the sewer side, there's something called the 201 boundary. And what we acknowledged about in 2011 was, is that the city has a responsibility under, under, under our 201 plan to make decisions about public sewer inside of that 201 boundary. So, so at originally, the planning and zoning urban service boundary was just like a mile outside of the city limits. Well, that doesn't align with what the Division of Water says that we have a responsibility. So what was happening was, is some people were trying to do things inside of, the, outside of the urban service boundary, but inside of our 201 boundary. And so that meant that that was confused.
Right.
And so what the decision was then was, do we align the urban service boundary with the 201 boundary? Because that's where the city's responsibility actually is. And so, yeah, that's the type of thing we've got to have a conversation about to reaffirm that that's how you want us to handle it. So we'll, we'll ultimately have to have some presentations like that as staff with you, and we'll have to confirm that for them through the process.
But I think, I've, thinking about the service boundary, we'll probably dig down a little more granular than what that original service boundary was.
Right.
Because it was pretty.
It was very vague.
It was very vague and very broad. Well, broad in a way of, yes, you could do projects in there, but those projects would be, you know, there's an affordability const, you know, considering that. And, and I think that we, we want to dig in a little, I, I wanted to dig in a little more granular on it and say, okay, where, where actually are we gonna grow in the next five to 20 years, is, which is the, this, the time span that we're looking at.
Right. So, so some of, some of that granular, the question is, is do you include that extra layer of detail in the comp plan? So that will be the discussion. Right now, that extra layer of detail is in our facilities plan. And so then, do we look at that boundary? How detailed do we want to communicate to developers? You know, you, that's part of the mapping question, but also that's part of the land use question. So you can have, you know, different types of development inside of that, that boundary versus just outside of it, different densities. And so when you're talking about on the comp plan granular level, that's how that conversation ultimately plays out. You're trying to decide lot sizes, what's, what's acceptable here, what's acceptable there. And, and we never did go through the process of working that boundary with that mindset. We've all, we just drew the boundary, and then we administratively had to judge that. And, and so the question is, do you want to add more detail in the comp plan by doing, doing the work that Josh is talking about on the front side versus administratively on the backside? So, so, so the questions would come to the city engineering position, and then we would have to go through the, the exercise with the developer saying, well, now this makes sense, this doesn't make sense. And really, you can spell that, you can do that work on the front side and make your comp. So what was happening is, is as the comp plan was coming out, people would never know that work was going on, right? So it made it look like, what are you doing? What, what's going on? So when we're talking about public buy-in, by going through that granular detail in the comp plan, the public theoretically should have more buy-in of that on the front side, and it should be more clear on the front side. And so we never did really do that historically. So that's to Josh's point, that's, that's a good exercise to do in the comp plan.
And I also think, you know, tell me if I'm wrong, Earl. I don't think our service, urban service boundary is as big a deal as you see in, like Lexington, where they spent a year kind of deciding where their urban service area is gonna be, because they have so much pressure on their boundary. But I just don't think we have that kind of pressure here. That's probably, and I think that, but if we can, it, it's more about what we do within, inside of what we have, is probably a bigger conversation this time. Maybe in 20 years, it's a different conversation. That's the point of doing this every five years, is it changes as you grow. But I think we'll, I don't think it's as, as big of it as a concern, maybe there's certain areas of town that it is. But it, you know, with like a Lexington, that's their number one conversation through their comp plan process, is how do we change our urban service boundary?
Now, or do we?
Yes.
I would almost rather Michaela tell us, you know, down the road, what would be better. Because, you know, we, we had a developer. Make it all the way through planning and zoning and pay all this money, and then it came to us, and all of a sudden, it was like, oh, there might not be water sewer. You know, so it almost needs addressed at that level somehow.
That's correct. It used to be, we used to address it on the front side of going through the planning and zoning process, because it's purely a utility. So there's no difference between the city addressing that on the front side and KU addressing it on the front side, or Inter County, or the gas company, or those other utilities. But because it says the city utility, a lot of times people just take that for granted, like it's inside of the city, it's there. The city utility is not, is managed in the same way your other utilities are. And so though, that planning effort has to be done by the city in advance, through the utility side, right? And, and oftentimes, that's confused. That really can't be done through the planning and zoning process in and of itself, because that's a utility function. Right? I hope that makes sense. But, but Marshall has to do that work on the front side. With, as the development plans are coming and being developed, Marshall has to do those works before they get to planning and zoning.
And that's typically a discussion that happens upfront when you're going through a zone change. If you're looking at a greenfield development that, you know, you would typically talk with utilities and make sure that's even a feasible project, but, yeah.
And, and an updated plan will increase or decrease the need for a zone change as folks come to town, to develop.
Well, the zone, probably the need for zone changes won't change much, because we won't actually change the zoning, but it might make the zoning, the zone change process more clear, because people will have an idea of what, what land they should seek to develop, what land they should seek to buy and purchase, and what areas we're looking at. Whereas right now, it's, I would say our future land use map is a little bit more of an existing land use map when you're looking at it. And so it's not very, it's not really clear what areas of Danville we want to see development and growth, or, you know, other parts of the county and stuff like that. So hopefully it'll just make the process easier and cleaner for a planning commission to know whether it's appropriate to develop there and the jurisdiction that's gonna ultimately be deciding on it, so.
Yeah, I think, hopefully, I mean, my, my hope actually is that it increases our zone changes that come through, but there's support for those when they get here.
Yeah.
That's the goal, is that we, we, we put a future land use map together that, you know, promotes some zone changes that the community wants to see. They want to see this change from something to something else, and that when it gets to your all's, gets to, to the, to the point where you all vote on it, there's community support for it. That's, that's really the goal.
And hopefully take the decision-making really out of our hands, since it'll all be decided before it gets to the, to our level. Michaela, great answer to that, though.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the commission?
So if you want to spend time with myself and Marshall, or myself and Josh, to talk through some of your direct questions on transportation and some of those things, we'll be happy to set aside a time to do that. We'll bring up some maps for you in our office and, and walk you through kind of, to clarify those. The comp plan can be a heavy subject and can be very complicated. So please feel free to schedule time and come by the office, and we'll walk, walk through those and, you know, identify your questions for you. You know, identifying your questions helps you try to see where you need an answer, you know? And, and the more you talk about it, the more easily it's gonna be to identify those questions.
And I think the other thing I want to remind the commission of is that throughout this process, I feel like my areas have to do the most work. That I really want to be listening to the community and get the input from all aspects of the community. Because there will be some folks who'll be really pushing to get certain things done that might be in their best interest, but may not be in the best interest of the community. So we have to be real careful that we are listening to opinions from lots and lots of people, not just those who speak the loudest sometimes. Yeah, tell them I said that.
All right.
So I guess that was my question. What should we be thinking about between now and the next meeting? And that's kind of learning enough to ask the right questions, I guess.
Yeah.
Right now, I'm kind of underwater, to be honest with you.
Yeah. I would encourage you to take a higher level view. Right now, we're not in the granular, like some of the stuff that we're talking about, we'll get to that point. But right now, you're looking at it from a, you know, a 20-foot level view. We'll get to that point, but right now, you're looking at it from a, you know, a 20-foot level view. You just want to take, just like envision in your mind what you want to see Boyle County looking like in five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now. What would excite you about it? What challenges do you think we have to get there? Those types of things. So it's really more of just a visioning exercise of dreaming big and what you think Boyle County can be and should be, and what it already is, and what you love about it. Those types of things. I think that'll be kind of what's pushing the discussion. Just that visioning exercise. And then we'll get into the nitty gritty as we get further down the line. But right now, it's really just that high level view, so.
I think that helps.
Yep.
I appreciate this. This is sort of an agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure it might, you know, change a little bit, but I think that just gives you a general idea of some of the discussion we'll be having. And I think Joe is hoping to bring it across jurisdictions, so you'll be able to talk with the county and Parable and Junction, and what their thoughts are on it as well, so.
And the timeframe for the meeting is 9:00 AM until you finish the agenda?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. Yeah, I think I booked the room from 8:00 to 4:00. We have to be out by 4:00. All tables cleared, everything. So I'm hoping it'll be, you know, I don't know how long it'll take, but we have the room for the day. I think Ashley's getting some lunches for everyone, so it'll be fun, hopefully.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So thinking big, you know, Michaela stated that this is pretty much an existing land use map. And sadly, planning just to do any development has had to almost amend, right? The future land use map in order to do a zone change.
We do have that mechanism in our comp plan right now that allows the planning commission to go through a flume amendment process. And so basically, yeah, we are, we're changing the future land use map to meet what's coming in. And I think it was done out of a necessity, because it was hard to get any development done with the current state of our future land use map. And so I'm hoping to remove that. That would be a goal of mine, is to remove that mechanism. And hopefully, our future land use map will serve that purpose, and we don't need it. But that is unique to Boyle County, I think. I've not seen that otherwise.
Yeah, you don't usually have to amend the flume, so.
No.
And you don't want to. So I hope everybody can be encouraged to really think big. Could we think big and, while the community, and just think big within that whole municipal utility service boundary? I mean, would that be the area to mostly think big, I guess?
Yeah, I think that's the area you'd want to focus on, certainly for higher density urban style development, which would be commercial, industrial, and higher density residential, but.
You're taking on the challenge of having four governmental bodies work together on this.
Yeah, yeah.
Brave soul.
I think it's going to go great. I have a lot of faith in it, so.
Kevin keeps telling me it's going to be okay, so.
It's going to be okay.
Yeah.
All right. I don't know why I trust him, but. It'll be a good time. Good work. Yeah. And I want to echo what Don said. This is a great document, but it's, it gets us to thinking about it.
Yep. I didn't put that together. Joe put that together, so.
Makes me think I don't want to show up until lunchtime.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, great.
Other questions, comments? They look forward to next week?
Good.
Four commissioners look forward to next week?
All right. All right, thank you all.
I didn't say I did, nope. Thank you. Josh is going to get a start on the next item on the agenda.
We're getting the slideshow loaded up.
Okay. We're going to spend some money this morning. Oh, we do, no. We have some decisions, spend some money, yeah. Spend some money.
So I'll. So we'll try to run through this pretty quick, as quick as we can. Stop us for questions as we go through, because like every time we do one of these, we're going to cover a lot of ground.
Can we get a copy of this, or not?
Well, Miranda was printing some. Hopefully she gets those up here soon.
Okay.
She's going to be printing some. Yeah, I wanted to get everybody copies of this, but we're going to, and I think too, we'll try to, I think we may post this on, you know, on the website or something afterwards, just so the community kind of sees it as well. So I was going to start out and cover a couple of slides, and then hand it over to our design team. Try to kind of frame where we're at in the process for everybody. You know, we've had, internally, we've had some big conversations in the past few weeks about where we're, where we are, where we're going to from here. And we wanted to kind of reinforce that this is a long process. You know, we, this was started in 2017 with the master plan development, you know, when I wasn't here. And we went through the master plan development, master plan, kind of getting it started up. You know, initiation is the word on the slide, which is, you know, organizationally and operationally, making some adjustments, but that's also when the city took over operations, and then COVID hit, and things kind of got pushed to all different directions. And then I showed up in 2021. And so the next phase was, okay, let's start implementing the facility side of the master plan, which is really the focus of what we're doing here. And, you know, it's interesting, when you look at the facility side of it, you know, we're trying to put together more of a long-term plan, but at the same time, things change a lot. You have, you know, the community needs are changing. Parks and Rec industry changes. I mean, pickleball two years ago wasn't on our radar, and now it's a pretty, it's a top priority. And also just how the cycle of design and construction, we've run into that a lot. You know, it's a two- to four-year cycle, once you even say go on a project before it gets completed. And I think, and also the cycle of elected officials coming through, and how you all, how you all view projects, and the time you spend on them, and getting them approved. So we want to, we want to lean into that a little more in the future. That's something I've talked to the design team about, is how we, like intentionally riding those waves, starting a project, getting the design and getting the construction in a time period that fits within, you know, the windows of when we can do things, but also the window that fits in your all's kind of schedule and your all's thought processes. So that's something I wanted to touch on a little bit, you know, the next slide. And then we, you know, how we fund these. We've spent this first phase kind of spending down existing reserves, but I think we're moving into a different phase of how we fund parks projects from here, here on out. We're going to have to utilize bond, you know, borrow money to do these projects, grants. And then we're going to have to get county and community support. We're going to have to be creative about how we find funding for all these projects moving forward, because as we've seen, the cost is much higher than it was five years ago, much higher than it was 10 years ago. And we, you know, we've got a lot of work we want to do, and we want to do it well, but it's got to stay within what's financially reasonable for the community. So I think that's kind of my intro to where we are right now. So what we want to do is kind of, okay, we've through phase one, getting to the end of phase one with Jenny Rogers and, you know, against tennis courts. And how does, what does phase two look like? What fits in that two-to-four-year kind of cycle for these projects? And what do we want to start on now? It's kind of the end of the project, end of the presentation. So I'll hand it over to John and let them kind of go through, you know, where we, kind of some of the recommendations you all provided at the last meeting. We talked to the Parks Committee. We've spoken to them about their recommendations and how we've kind of landed on where we want to go from here, so.
Hi, good to see you again. Hopefully, everyone can hear. Okay, so for today, I don't have 40 slides, so we'll be sensitive to timing. But we really want to revisit the conversation we had in March with the workshop. So the things that we drew out of that, or trying to get out of that, was understanding the park vision. So at the beginning, if you remember, we asked you to tell us what parks mean to you and what we need to be thinking about. So I want to share with you what we heard. We also went through the DOD exercise to understand key park considerations. What should we be thinking about every time we put pen to paper and start thinking holistically about the park system? We also wanted to prioritize the parks and the amenities that we have available to us. So we have a lot of exciting things that we're envisioning, but what are those things that are critical path? And then we also discussed and have summarized our strategic partners. Strategic partnerships are going to be extremely important to us. So we want to share with you what we've identified, recognizing that that list should always be active and live. We should always be thinking about how we can creatively come together with a common vision to help execute what we're trying to do. We want to talk about the existing projects, specifically Michael Smith Park, which is slated to be rebid. Millennium Park expansion and improvements. We're finishing up with the tennis courts, but now what, what do we want to look at next? The aquatic discussion that we've been talking about since this project got started. It's evolved. So we want to think about what that, where we've landed and recommendations moving forward. And then the indoor recreation feasibility study. We talked about indoor recreation. We've got a great asset in Jenny Rogers, but that's not going to fill the needs for indoor recreation. So what does that mean to us? And that was one of the high priorities that we identified as a group. And then we want to talk about the next steps and our recommendations for where we ought to go. This is open discussion, and so I encourage you, if you have questions, please feel free to stop me so we can address those as we go through this. So with that, the workshop, what we heard through the conversations at the beginning of the last one, there were really seven themes that came up. One was to complete the existing projects that we had ongoing. The tennis courts are finishing up now. The water play in Michael Smith Park is still in process, so finishing that up was a high priority. And the Jenny Rogers Community Center Childcare Facility is currently under construction, and we're working towards finishing that, determining what the actual needs are for aquatics. So the discussion about a community pool and splash pads to distribute aquatics and water play throughout the community to better serve the entire community, not just pockets. We wanted to, we need to think about trails and connectivity, especially between our parks, our schools, and our civic assets. How do you get from point A to point B safely? And making sure that that network is integrated and well-thought-through, so that we don't have gaps. We can easily navigate through the community itself. Re-energizing our existing park assets. So creating a vision for some of the parks that have, that have been left in place and intact, but not really improved recently. Renovating the existing structures when possible, so let's make sure we're not knocking something down to build something back in place. And then Jackson Park and Cowan Park master plans seem to rise to the top of those parks that we wanted to focus on. Thinking about community needs, the indoor recreation facility was something that you felt and told us was important. And events or amenities like pickleball courts, we need to think about holistically how we're going to address that and distribute that amongst the community. And then equitable distribution of those services. So making sure that geographically, we're serving all parts of the community. And thinking about accessibility for seniors and for folks with special needs. And then finally, fiscal responsibility. Understanding that costs are going to continue to rise on the construction side. We need to think about facilities like Bunny Davis. What does that mean to us? And then leveraging our assets to make sure we're maximizing our return on investment. If you want, I can let you navigate to the right page before I move on. And we're on the park consideration summary.
We have, thank you, Mayor. We have, for the benefit of mission and John, we have several members of the parks, the city parks and街道的
You're welcome. Welcome, everyone. It's good to see you as well. Oh, you did? I feel like we're spinning off on a wild tangent here, so, no. So moving on, so the key park considerations, these are also prioritized. So the aquatic facility and improvement in that, those facilities that can be utilized by all residents was the top, was really the top priority for us. Leveraging key partnerships and stakeholders, right? So we understand that what we're, what we're doing as we move forward is going to require those collaborative approaches and creative ways of getting things executed. Making sure that we consider park access. That means throughout the community. Making sure that safety is the highest priority to get from point A to point B. Creating and improving indoor recreation. So we need to understand and define what that is, and make sure that we're hitting the right target in terms of scale, distribution, et cetera. And then capitalizing on our existing park assets, the structures, the land that we already have for parks. Let's make sure that we're leveraging that to the best of our ability before considering things like going out and purchasing more property for parks, et cetera. We also, as part of that DOD exercise, prioritized the parks that we needed to focus on and amenities that were within those parks. So these are also prioritized. Henry Jackson Park really had the most interest in our exercise. Michael Smith Park was the second one, Cowan Park, Jenny Rogers, and the Millennium Park expansion. Not that the other parks didn't receive interest, but these were the ones that really rose to the top based on what we did. And then within that, the desired amenities within those parks. So playground at Michael Smith Park was the highest vote getter, and that was not part of that initial phase one. So we now need to rethink that and what that bid document might look like. So if the playground's the most important, we really need to think about that. Aquatics at Jenny Rogers, restrooms and pickleball courts at Jackson Park, indoor recreation at Millennium Park, basketball courts at Henson Park, the dog park at Cowan, playground on the South Neighborhood Park, water play at Michael Smith and the Civic Green and Pavilion, the bypass connection between Millennium Park and Bunny Davis, multipurpose field at Millennium Park, basketball courts at Cowan, and accessibility at Henson Park. So all of those were seen as being higher priority than some of the other amenities that we have within those, within our park system. During that March meeting, we also identified strategic partners. This list is by no means comprehensive, but it does encapsulate the stakeholders that, and partners that we had discussed during the meeting, and also includes the task force, the Jenny Rogers Task Force, that was assembled as we started that project. But there inevitably going to be more. We ought to be looking and seeking other partnerships and, because I, as I said, it's going to be, take a holistic collaborative community approach to do what we're trying to get accomplished here. Are there any questions? That's kind of the summary of what we discussed in March, before I move on.
Yeah, I definitely wanted to pause here. We talked about the other day. Pause and just make sure we didn't miss something, or something has changed, popped up in the last minute. It's been almost three months now, I think, since we met. Just so we didn't, we didn't miss anything. We felt like that was a pretty good, comprehensive review of that, that exercise.
I guess I'm surprised, under desired amenities, with all of the talk about additional splash pad locations, I thought that might make the list. That was kind of high on what I've heard from the public.
Right. But this is just a filtration of data that we had. We recognize that aquatics is still, one of the things to keep in mind is that aquatics was one of the key priorities that we had, how they're distributed amongst the, the community, within the individual parks, the community pool. So, in our key park considerations, aquatics was number one. So, it didn't necessarily get reflected in the individual amenities, which may have meant that we didn't identify a splash pad in some of those lists for each of the parks, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I think, I think part of that came, we, we pulled that list out of the master plan that we, that we provided for people to put dots on. And in 2018, the splash pad conversation wasn't what it is now.
Right.
So, I think that was, they may have distorted that a little bit, but I think, you know, like John said, it's, splash pads and aquatic facilities are, you know, we know that's a top priority for the community. So, our, our conversation going forward reflects that along with the data we collected from the dots.
Yeah, because I had even heard a lot of splash pad ideas at Millennium. And, you know, I just don't see even aquatics on the list for Millennium, so, just throwing that out there.
No, absolutely. And one of, and that's part of this process, right? To, to continue to think about what aquatics means now. When we get to that snapshot of that discussion in 2018, Josh pointed out that we were looking at a centralized aquatic facility. Now, that's changing. We're looking at things that can be distributed and decentralized. So, there's going to be an evolution of thought as we move forward. What we do know is that that decentralization needs to happen based on the feedback that we're receiving.
If Bunny Davis Pool can financially be feasible to rehab, will that probably change the scope of what kind of pool would go to Jenny Rogers? So, if we have in our mind to have two pools, that they need to be identical, I think that's a question for all of us to think about.
I think.
Because we wanted to recreate it with laps, lap swimming and so forth.
Yeah, the, the next slide kind of goes into a lot of, like, your all's questions. That's, we'll just move on to it because it is about aquatics and it has those kind of, those bullet points on there.
Well, can I ask on, when we met, did we mention Bunny Davis? Was that on our dots? I can't remember.
It, it really wasn't because that, that master plan, they assumed we would be moving on from Bunny Davis.
Well.
Yeah, and it's so.
I'm just saying, you know, that's something we can discuss.
Yeah, we're thinking about that, and that's what, like, on, you know, we've, we've got, you know, moving forward, how do we address, what do we do with Bunny Davis? And, you know, because that mindset's changed. I think it's changed from, you know, you standpoint, but also cost standpoint, those, the math has changed a little bit, so we've got to reevaluate that.
I think you mentioned that this was a sort of a living plan anyways. Nothing, things change probably by the month almost.
Well, there has to be flexibility built in to this because trends and needs are always going to change.
Yeah, but you have to have a getting off point, which is where we are now.
That's exactly right.
Or a starting point, rather.
Exactly. I think we have to understand a vision, but the beautiful part about a master plan is that it does have the ability to be modified and tweaked to address certain trends that are coming online. I, I would love to tell you that I can forecast what we're going to need in 15 years from now, but that's simply, it, it's difficult.
I'm still confused about pickleball.
Yeah. Well, pickleball was, you know, if you think about it, in the master plan in 2018, pickleball, I don't think showed up.
I'm not hearing.
And now, it's something that we need to consider.
Absolutely.
Right? And are actively addressing. So, so what I want to do is, is dive a little deeper into several areas. The aquatic discussion, as I said, it's clear that since 2018, decentralizing that aquatic facility or distributing and disseminating aquatics through the community is the desire. And there are really two areas that that can happen. One is a community pool. And right now, in the short term, Bunny Davis is being repaired and maintained to serve as the community pool. Jenny Rogers, as we had discussed, seems like a logical location for a community pool. So, in our mind, it makes a lot of sense to have a community pool up and operational seamlessly. So, abandoning Bunny Davis now so we can design and construct in a two-year timeline means that a community pool's not available for two years. That doesn't seem logical to me. However, if Bunny Davis continues to be maintained, and I think staff has done a great job addressing some of the mechanical issues, cleaning it up, we can go ahead and dig into the, the beginning of design, refinement of the design concept that you had, understand again what that means to us, both from a cost standpoint, a practicality standpoint. And then, when that's designed and built, then we can go back and revisit Bunny Davis and decide, does it make sense to keep it? Right? Do we think about renovating the building in those facilities? And do you have two facilities as opposed to one? That way, you've got a continuum of service for a public pool within the community. You don't have that dead period. Splash pad locations, these are a few that come to mind for us. Michael Smith, that will have a water play feature. Millennium Park has been mentioned in conversations. Jackson Park, Cowan Park, and even South Danville Park seem like logical locations to consider a splash pad as well. And if you think about that geographically, now we're starting to have those touch points around the community, making sure that we're, we're being honest and authentic, serving all of the residents within the community. Any questions or comments?
Well, I, I appreciate that slide because that slide just really hits home with me because the ball, I don't know what I should say, the, the water hole is going to keep on moving till we put something, build something. Now, if we were to build the Jenny Rogers facility as design, it might satisfy all the needs in the community, it might not. But until we do something, we don't know what kind of progress we're making. So, as I look at that, I see the Michael Smith Park and I see the Jenny Rogers Center as two things that we need to go ahead and target and get done yesterday, for example.
Yes.
Because then, we'll find out what the community really, find out what the community's needs really are then.
Right.
Yeah, we just keep talking about stuff and it keeps changing. And I am in support of maintaining Bunny Davis without a renovation as long as we can, to have two facilities going. Because right now, Bunny Davis seems to be available for our community in a very inexpensive fashion right now. And I might bite my tongue on that next week, but right now, it's going pretty good. And folks are really pleased with the great work that the staff's done and then how they, how they've operated. So, one thing is that let's stop the discussions, let's get beyond the design phase, let's get to the move-in-the-dirt phase in some of these projects. We've got all this money set aside in our budget and we can spend some of it because the price is not going to come down, it's going to keep going up. Sorry about that, but.
Michael Smith Park, rebidding the park. As I said, based on feedback, refining the scope makes sense. So, the water play feature, we had the conversation about reimagining what that could be. The facility or the structure that we had initially thought about, I think, was a little difficult financially to comprehend. So, are there other creative ways to still provide water play, but maybe in a different form? So, we need to think about what that means to us. The playground was one of the highest amenity items identified on our list. So, exploring alternatives of what playground really means within the context of the master plan, and then preparing bid documents as part of this next phase. And then, there will be site improvements to consider. Accessibility, number one, can we get folks to each of those venues? Restrooms that can be addressed, I think, creatively, and we need to think through that. And then, stormwater management because we're in the flood plain. So, there are going to be some site-related items that we need to think about. We also need to explore alternative delivery systems. And what I mean by that is the rock wall, which we've heard is really important to the community, and support parking, which is another thing. Are there other mechanisms that we can engage outside of this bid set to get those amenities, but maybe it comes from another source? Maybe another budget? Those are things that I think we would have to understand, or could it be self-performed?
Yeah, we're, we're looking at maybe self-performing the parking lot. Public Works do that work to save, save money there. The rock wall, the Rotary through a grant has purchased the rock for the wall. So, they, that's something we worked on in May with them. They had a grant they needed to spend by the end of May and they, on, on Michael Smith Park, so we worked with them to purchase the rock. So, it, we have it. So, there, there's some things there where we're trying to kind of put that together in a more affordable way. You know, we could get the, the block that behind the stone, you know, laid by, you know, we could do that small purchase, small procurement, not go through a bidding process for that, and kind of put it together one, one piece at a time. Because we have, you know, for those parts, we have the drawings done, we have the plans completed, so it's just a matter of getting someone there to do it and how we, how we procure that, that work.
Any other thoughts or questions?
You, you, the water play feature, sometime this morning, you're going to give us a new cost estimate for some of these things at Michael Smith Park?
Well, we understand that there has been funding set aside for Michael Smith Park. We understand that those are the parameters from which we're going to be operating. So, our task now is to take that, that investment and figure out how to get the most bang for our buck. So, the water play feature that we had before probably doesn't fit within that allocation, but what else can we do to still meet the spirit of having water play in the park? Maybe it's not a, an overhead structure. Maybe it's something that is ground-fed. Those types of things are what we would explore to try to fit within the budget that's been allocated to us. Keeping in mind that that playground is also going to be a, a key component to this park, and that, I think, deserves the attention of being a, a, a statement piece. So, we're going to have to balance that within what, what we understand we have moving forward.
Yeah, there, we, we budgeted a million dollars in this year's budget for that. So, we've, we've talked about like this, we need to kind of, we need to keep our, the splash, the water play, the playground, and the, you know, the sidewalks and stuff around it within that million. So, that's kind of the goal. So, we're, you know, the splash, the water play feature, we bid out the first time, the water play portion of it was about a million. We're going to need to get that down in like the 500,000, 600,000 range. So, we have, you know, we've talked like 300,000 on the playground. It's kind of, we're looking at those kind of numbers, but we'll, we'll come back to you all with more, once we, we're at like the, you know, we'll talk about recommendations at the end, and we'll, you know, the next step is to them to finalize the new plan, and then, we'll come back to you all after that with, with more.
You got to include restrooms.
Well, restrooms are part of the conversation. We, we, it's one of the things we were pulling out because of.
Cowboys don't volunteer their house for restrooms.
So, we, you know, we've gotten by Lexington Avenue with just the portable restrooms.
Yeah.
And that, that's part of this, is like, okay, can we, how, you know, we'll just, maybe we go that route and just see how long we get by and we can come back in later and put a restroom in when we, when we feel like we can get that funded. And that's one of those, you know, do we find someone in the community to help us fund that through a sponsorship or, or through, you know, something or, you know, you know, there's, as we kind of put this together piece by piece, we've got to explore what creative ways we can fund each of these items. But to get to that, to get under that million-dollar number, I don't, I think restrooms are, yes, one of the things we're going to have to pull out.
Well, the goal should be that Michael Smith, with that million dollars and the rock wall being paid for, that we see some ground broken and something being done between now and next summer.
Well, that's one of the things we want to talk about. We, we would like to, we'd like to get to some point where bidding is out September, October of this year, so that we're breaking ground before, before the holidays. Then, we really need to hit that timeline if we want to get a water play feature running June 1st, 2024. So, that's, that's probably the, you know, when we talk later about, when I, we go over recommendations at the end, that's, this is the, we got to get going quickly on this, this project.
The one thing we hear as a commission is, you know, it's the north versus the south. And I'm not a part of the north versus the south. But we got, we're trying to provide a balance, so we break some ground and get something started there. And then, I still think about Butler Park being further south, but you know, we got to start someplace to get something done.
Yeah, it's the thing for this, we took, you know, we started talking more about, once we do the, we were pulling the budget in, what, what are the things that made Lexington Avenue Park work the way it works, that makes it so popular? And it's the complement, you know, complimentary, you know, splash pad playground there next to each other. Those are, that's what makes it work. There's not enough parking there, there's not good restrooms there, there's nothing else there. Those two things together are what make that work. So, that's, that's why we're, that's going to be our focus of this first part, is just, let's get the splash pad and the playground in, and then, we'll just start working in amenities to, to complement that as we go. You know, we'll, and so, that's, that's kind of the focus that we've changed a little bit. It's like, let's, let's get this, at least do that Lexington Avenue Park level, matching amenities, because that, that works. And, and get it there, and then, we'll start adding amenities as we can.
I think the other thing people need to remember is the reason we started there is because of the work at the water treatment plan allowed for pretty simple installation. So, we weren't picking one place over another, it was just convenience more than.
And also, like, I, I like to talk about it because, you know, I, I wasn't here during that time period, but for me, it feels like a real, a good example of something people weren't thinking about, but then, once we did it, the, the success of it. So, it kind of forces people to think outside the box of what they've, what they consider good ideas. It's like, okay, well, this, look what can happen if you just put something new in, that's cool. And I think that we've tried to use that as like, okay, what can we do that's just new and cool that people are going to love to use? And, and that's, I, it may, even with like this, we would talk about the survey and like what people want and don't want. Sometimes, it's the thing they're not thinking about that's the most successful because it's not, it's not provided anywhere else in the community, which is what I think we ran into there.
My, my last comment that I've heard from the citizens, as we look at each small neighborhood park, don't forget the teenagers, even if, like, even Michael Smith, have we upgraded the basketball hoops? That type of thing.
So, that's, the, that was kind of another phase, you know, on the master plan was to, to put a new, a new basketball court, multi-sports court in there. But that, that, you maybe, we need to back up and think, okay, is that really fitting in within our 20-year timeline when we look at all of parks? If not, we need to invest the money in what's there, like we went, we talked about existing assets. Let's, if it's, if we're not going to build something new, let's, let's put some money into what we have and make it, make it nice.
It can be spruced up.
Yes, without a lot, without a huge expense, right?
Right.
I think we could.
Just a small bit, so.
$20,000 into it, and it would go a long way, you know, that, those kind of.
Right, right. Okay. Well, thank you, yeah. Just remember the teens at each of these little small parks, so.
Yeah, and a lot of our parks, I think we could do some things to make things better, but, but without just sitting and waiting. I mean, we can do things to make things better in the meantime. I mean, because we're not going to get there tomorrow, which we would all like, but we can do things to help in the meantime and make things better. But also, can you, I mean, can we look at grants? I know that takes time, but for playgrounds or specialty need playground, you know, can we look at grants?
Yeah, I mean, that's, those, those land and water grants come through every year. We've, you know, in the past, we've got, we've, we've ordered the playgrounds, new playgrounds for Jackson and Cowan through that. We've got, we'll, we've, we've been awarded a grant for Butler Park for a new, Butler Drive Park for a new playground, so we'll definitely, that's one of the things we've talked about, is those, kind of those land and water grants especially. And we're doing the Performance Pavilion this year, which I think is kind of a special thing that, you know, because tourism was, was working with, it's on that. With the future, every year, we'll just replace playgrounds, and we'll make a schedule of what playground's the worst playground, and it gets, it gets applied for, and we'll just kind of keep that cycle going. You know, because those are, those are 80/20.
Right.
So, you know, there's a.
I mean, there's a lot of grants out there for playgrounds.
There are.
So, we need to explore all we can.
And also, part of that too is just maintaining the ones we have, which we, we, we talk a lot about in parks of like, making sure where, where somebody's touching those playgrounds and looking at them and, and replacing bolts and painting things that need painted, and it's little things like that that need done.
Oh, no, not at all. The last, the last thing that I want to go through is the Millennium Park expansion and confirming what the next steps would be within that additional land that we got through the fairground purchase. The baseball field is one option we can consider, which would be the playing surface, lighting, I would assume we would want lighting. I would assume we would want lighting to extend the life, you know, so we can have weekday games, et cetera. Access and parking to support that. The community building, the existing building that's out there identified, kind of in the, if I can find it right there, to renovate that existing building and with that, have that home plate or that outdoor terrace. So you could have indoor/outdoor options to host events, maybe even lease that out as a potential revenue generator. Parking and infrastructure that would go with that. So if you have that venue and you're hosting events, obviously we've got to put people and cars somewhere. The Performance Pavilion, like Josh said, we've applied for a grant for that. And that's next to the Civic Green. It's actually off the screen, but it's over right where Millennium Park, kind of over in that area. But that's a stage and we have to think about access. Fortunately, on that side of the park, we've got ample parking. So we won't have to think about that kind of infrastructure. And then the multipurpose field, which actually showed up as one of those desired items. The playing surface, lighting and access for that to give us more flexibility, extend seasons, et cetera, for lacrosse, football, soccer, et cetera. Just having a venue that's synthetic so we can extend that, the use of that facility. So those are the things that, that are available to us to consider. Are there any questions about the expansion of Millennium Park? I think a lot of this information you've seen before, but I just want to circle back and make sure that we're thinking through it holistically. If not, I think.
So try to wrap things up here with our recommendations. So what we would like to do is, like I talked before, number one, Michael Smith Park, move forward with getting bid documents ready for this, for the revised bid, which will be the water play playground and the, and the site work necessary for those, for those items. We've got, we've got money in the, but we've got the million dollars in the budget, which was what we would put towards, towards that, that item. Number two would be Jenny Rogers Aquatics. So we've, we've budgeted $500,000 this year for aquatics. That $500,000 would go towards developing the design. This will be a, the numbers on this project will, will be big. So when I talk about $500,000 for design, that's, that's a legitimate amount of money that it will cost to design this project. Because, you know, we're looking at a $10 million project. That's probably not going to be all of the design cost. And that will, that will take up this year at least as we put design together, as we go through permitting. I want to touch on this because you'll see it kind of written several places, schematic design. So one of the things I want to do to help, to help you all moving forward is, is break our design process down into steps and come back to you at the end of each step. So we'll do a schematic design, which is, you know, 30, 40% design, something like, so when, you know, thinking about it from a design standpoint, it's, it's a concept. It's, it's more than a concept. I mean, it's actually drawings, but it doesn't get into the details of the drawings. So what, what our design team will do, they'll put a schematic design together. They'll do a construction cost estimate off of that schematic design. They will bring that to you all and we'll look at it together. And in Earl and I've talked, I'd like to get a vote from you all to move forward. So you'll see, you'll see where the direction we're heading and then any changes you all want to see. Or if the cost is too high, what do we, what are the things we can do to bring that cost down? But I want to kind of touch base with you all a couple of times through design process. So you're aware of the direction we're going, not just from a design standpoint, but from a, from a cost standpoint. So then when we come to you all with bids, you all aren't surprised at how we ended up where we ended up. So that's what we'd like to do, Jenny Rogers, is move forward with a schematic design. And at some point, we'll get a, we'll get, when we do that schematic design, we'll get a scope and fee from our design team to do that. I'll come back to you all to approve that scope and fee. At that time, we'll have an idea of the schedule, which is, will be a big part of this, is how long is this schematic design going to take? You know, it's probably a year-plus design process, two-year construction process. So we're still three-plus years away from aquatics. So that's one of the good, one of the big things about keeping Bunny Davis running is that we've, we've got some summers that we're going to have to keep, or will still be swimming there over the next couple of years. And then number three on the list is, is putting together some schematic designs and cost estimates for the items at Millennium Park, baseball, parking and roadway infrastructure, park office and home plate, the outdoor performance venue. So we'd like to move forward with those as well. We have money in the budget for the Millennium Park expansion in the capital, in the capital list of projects. And that's what we would utilize for that. We're going to need the county's help on that a lot. So that'd be a big part of that process will be coordination with the county. Not only from a, from a financial standpoint, we'd like to, you know, have their support with that project. But also White's Park is owned by the county and a lot of that work's happening on White's Park. So we need to work out property issues. We need to work out, you know, funding issues. So that's one of the first things we'll do with that is kind of get with the county and, and start talking about how they want to be involved in, you know, they need to be involved throughout, throughout the design, throughout, you know, coordination, because they're, they're an important part of that. And then moving to number four would be indoor recreation. We'd like to, you know, we, this is a little less defined, but we, we want to start the process of really digging into indoor recreation, which is, is not only a new facility of some kind, but also the future of Bunny Davis. So we would kind of pair those two together, do a feasibility study on, and I, and I, almost, almost of a, almost a business plan concept of how can we, how can we renovate, how can we spend money in a way that will maximize not only the best thing for the community, but also looking at revenue of how we can offset the cost of some of these facilities? Because an indoor recreation facility is going to also be a very expensive item. So we've got to, we've got to explore the different ways that we can bring cost down and bring revenue up. And like I said, Bunny Davis is a big part of that. But like I said, with aquatics and Jenny Rogers, if we, if, when we move forward with that project, like we have, like I said, minimum of three years, we have time to really consider Bunny Davis. It's not a decision we have to make in the next month or two of the future of it. We have some, some summers here that we can, we could work through the appropriate thing to do. And then in the meantime, like we talked about, continued incremental park improvements. We're going to keep working hard and spending money on our existing assets to get them in the best shape possible, which maybe will take a little pressure off of us to spend money on some of these bigger projects if we can get what we have in good shape. And then share recommendations with the county, like I talked about on item number three. We've got to bring the county in and discuss how we can partner with them on a lot of these, on a lot of these projects moving forward.
Well, you, you saying discuss with the county number three, I'd like to take the stance that we discussed with the county all number one through five.
And that's kind of what we're saying with six.
You know, I know they say it's city-owned property, but, you know, we don't say that you live in the city, live in the county. They need to be invested in all of these projects.
So, yeah, that, that is the next step collectively as a joint city-county meeting to discuss. Kind of, the, the path was, we completed the 2018 plan. And so then, then we communicated to the county that we were going to develop these concepts. And we've tried to update them along the way. So we've had the magistrates in the park driven, driving around, showing them renderings and things over the last couple of years. And now that process with the city commission is refined to these bullet points, right? We, we have talked about aquatics enough to where the idea of two pools, the idea of Jenny Rogers, the city was able to acquire that, that seems like a good idea. So as we getting all the way to these bullet points, the next step in planning with your partners is communicating this with your partners, right? And so, so that's, that's just the next thing we need to schedule as staff is we need to schedule a joint city-county meeting where, where this presentation is made. But before we got there, we want to make sure as staff that this is what you all tend to agree with. So we're presenting this with the idea that you all agree this is the path forward for us at this time, right? And so, so for us, in a nutshell, then, we know we've got to do some improvements to Michael Smith. We know we want to fully get into the, to the conclusion of what Jenny Rogers will look like. We know that we've got to continue to expand Millennium Park. Baseball field, we know is probably the next step. But also the community building, would the county want to participate with that? The, then the indoor recreation, we know we got to continue that dialogue. That's going to, that's a hard lift. Incremental improvements, we know we got Butler Drive playground to install. We know we've got Cowan Street to figure out, right? And then ultimately, these are our partners and we've got the park, park committee that provides feedback, that have looked, that we want to continue that process. So all those people, the park committee, the county, and you guys need to be in the room together at one time to talk about these and how we continue that process. Hope that makes sense.
It does. And what I, what I was thinking here is that, okay, we have the Michael Smith Park. It's in the city, owned by the city. But there's a magistrate out there that has quite a few constituents who live in the Michael Smith Park area.
Yep.
You take Jenny Rogers, we've got a magistrate who has lots of constituents who live in the Jenny Rogers area. So we, we need to tell them, make sure they understand that. These are city-owned properties, city activities, but they're being serviced, they're being used by all citizens in the county. And I lived in the Michael Smith Park area and found out my magistrate was opposed to these things being developed there. I'd have some questions, some comments about that.
Well, and when, when the merger occurred with the county, so there's a couple of high-level bullet points we got to, we want to refocus on. When the merger happened and the recommendation 2018 was administer Parks and Rec through one agency and the decision was made to bring it into the city. At the time, the county, these, these topics were gray. And so the county, the county's operational revenue contributes to the operation of Millennium Park and a portion of Bunny Davis and the pool, and that's it. So they've contributed nothing yet in the way of capital. That's not a, this is not a criticism, right? This is not the opportunity for them to have this discussion is only now migrating to the point, which is misunderstood. It's now migrating to the point where it's time to really get them back involved with capital. If they're interested in participating in Parks and Rec on a larger scale than Millennium Park, this is now the time where we start talking about it. As you say, there is a solution now to aquatics. Okay, so now do they want to participate in it? At the time, when we were talking about this big regional, the initial concept with Millennium Park was a regional swim center. Well, those really aren't effective for neighborhoods. And so then, so the aquatics is refined to this, well, maybe this is something they want to participate in, right? And then the other idea is, you know, so Josh and I've struggled with this and it, it has occurred to me since I've talked to Josh about it last. You got to keep in mind, we are not piecemealing things. It appears like it's piecemealed, but things are built incrementally. Millennium Park was not one contract, it was built in six phases. There was a time where Millennium Park was open and there was, there was no softball complex over there. The softball complex didn't come until five years after the roadway infrastructure was built. And then more importantly, 10 years later or so is when the last softball field was built, right? All these things happen, you know, we added restrooms in what, to the, to the children's playground. We added those restrooms in 2015 era, you know? That was 15 years after the park was built, after that playground was built, right? So, so while we're feeling the pressure that we're not doing anything, all these parks happen like that over time. You never just necessarily build a $20 million facility unless it's truly a true necessity to do that as quickly as possible. You're always going to kind of try to pay for it as you go, afford these incremental things as you go, add a, add a baseball field here, add a bathroom here. That, that's just the nature of it. And so don't be discouraged when, when someone says, well, you're never going to get, you're never getting anything done. Truthfully, the city's never done. Nothing is ever complete. We do something this time, 15 years from now, we're going to tear it out and do something different because the society has changed. And we're never finished. And a lot of times the pressure we feel, now the streetscape is a finite project that we got to get done. There's no question about that. We got to finish that thing up and continue to press until that's done. However, however, with the parks, you're constantly refining that. And citizens sometimes don't look at it that way. But the reality in this room is that's what happens.
And, and I, I'd like to, that's an excellent summation in a sense. And I don't feel any pressure about getting any of this stuff done, not from my constituents. I feel pressure from the five of us that we want to be able to say that we've gotten some things done. We know it takes time. Now, what's scary about this warning to me is to think that it still may take us three years to get Jenny Rogers, an aquatic place located at Jenny Rogers. And I hope Bunny Davis will last well beyond that three years, but you know, that's sort of iffy for me right now. But we do the best we can do and I understand that.
Yeah, we, we feel pretty good about Bunny Davis lasting three years. I mean, I, it's, we've, we've, we've made it, we've made strides forward this spring and summer out there. Even from, you know, from renovating some of the buildings and concession stands and those, those things. But also just from a leak standpoint, we've, we've lessened that as much as we can. We're not putting nearly as much water into it as we were last year. So I feel pretty good about Bunny Davis lasting three more years. And I, I'm going to start saying four years so I don't get in trouble like I do with streetscape. I was sorry, 2027.
Are we gonna, since we do have an advisory committee, are we going to get input from them?
We, we've, we've talked about this. We've talked, you know, we've, and committees here is.
I'd like to know what they thought either writing or just.
So, so. And I think, so, and I want to, maybe that's something we need, we need to refine that a little bit because I, I was thinking in the past few weeks about, you know, having, having kind of a, a group that constantly meets about these items. Well, it's the, it's the Parks Committee is who that needs to be. That was kind of one of those things like, oh, we already have that. It's just how I use it, and how I communicate with the Parks Too Many. You know, there, there's input on the larger picture here, but there's also, when I have kind of the, the monthly kind of things that pop up on these projects, that needs to be the group that I'm talking to about it. Not, not necessarily, I mean, I want to touch base with you all. You know, I do my quarterly reports to you all. But I think for them, the Parks projects, every month, we need to talk about not just the future planning, which is something we've tried to do with the Parks Too Many, but talk about our current projects. Like what's going on with tennis courts? What's going on at Jenny Rogers? Where our, where our progress is on those projects? Just so there's, there's kind of that feeling in the community of there, you know, you all have kind of learned at this point, me. I'm fully transparent about everything I have going on with the city. There's, I'm not afraid to talk about anything that we're doing and what the problems we have and how things are going well. So I want to do that with them. Make it kind of, those meetings might get a little bit longer. They're already long as they are. But I, I mean, they need to be involved in those conversations from it. So it's not a surprise when things, when the tennis courts, you know, something happens at tennis courts or, you know, the $100,000 rock excavation change order, that's, I want to be talking to them about those things so they're aware of the kind of things we're working through.
I think Mr. Kimick was getting ready to make a donation to build Bunny Davis.
Well, they're, they're a steering committee. They're the, they're our management steering committee. And that's the best description I have for them. And we don't, we've not transitioned from the old Parks and Rec committee to a steering committee yet. We're still in that process, you know?
That's, I've even talked about having a group of citizens to help us make decisions about Jenny Rogers. That kind of just needs to be that committee. That they need to, they need to take ownership of that. And I need to help them, I need to let them take ownership of that. So that's, we've got some things we're going to work on the next few months.
Okay, I want staff and the commission and design team to understand that a year ago, the Parks and Rec committee was a little bit frustrated. Many of the members talked to me individually about how they felt like they were just receiving reports and responding to receiving reports rather than helping design. The last year, that has changed dramatically. Yesterday, our committee reported to, we have, we have a duty under the July 1st, 2020 MOA of, of the city commission and the fiscal court to report quarterly to the commission and to the fiscal court. Yesterday, we initiated that process that was delayed by pandemic and some other matters, internal matters. And we are, we have turned the page and our committee is re-engaged. People showed up this morning, staff showed up, Stephanie and Amber. Our staff is re-engaged. Josh is keeping, is talking to us and Earl is talking to us. We are willing to, our committee's willing to work. Our committee represents diversity in terms of age, gender, race, better than it used to. Our committee is informed more than it was. And I could not be more proud of where we are now. Where, and our presentation yesterday at fiscal court was well-received, respectfully received. There was, there were questions about. There was, there were questions about how we're going to, in the future, reach out into the county. It gave us an opportunity to explain that everything within Boyle County borders is the county, including items and material and land within the city limits. We're all one unit. And we had a very healthy discussion yesterday with Fiscal Court. We're here today. Everybody was there yesterday. LaFonda Stallworth had a conflict, and Joe Marie Lammy, who was here this morning, had to attend a funeral. But our committee is ready to work. We have, I'm very optimistic about where we are and where we're going. And we do have access to Josh and Earl. Josh has been to our meetings and explained them, and it may be time that our committee redesigned our meetings a little bit to accommodate more of this transition to input from Josh and Earl that gets everybody in our committee a chance to engage. But our committee is ready to work, and we are engaged. We do not feel like we're superfluous like we did a year ago. Thank you. And Dave.
The biggest thing is I've seen in the last six months is we're moving forward.
Good.
We're not taking steps back.
Yeah.
And I think our current staff, without a director, needs to be commended for all the hard work they've put in. I mean, they kept this thing going, and we've actually made improvements without a director, so.
Josh has stepped in as acting director. Amber, I've described her as the glue that's kept Parks and Rec going. And Stephanie's energy and thinking outside the box with programs has been, it's really been fun to observe, and it's been energizing to observe, and it's successful. Connor Fair has stepped up at maintenance. He has a, he follows some people who are close friends of mine who did maintenance out at Millennium. And he's really followed up, he stepped up his game. Josh helped him, Josh and Earl helped him learn more about aquatics and get training in that at Bunny Davis. And I think he deserves, and they deserve, a lot of the credit, and Amber and a lot of people for the success at Bunny Davis. So our committee's informed, and we're ready to go, so we're ready to help you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to hear that.
I'd like to further comment. I was at the meeting yesterday, Fiscal Court, and Mark's right. They were well-received and they were engaging, but they also want to come to their meetings. So that's a step in the right direction, so they won't feel like they're uninformed. They shouldn't have any excuse.
Real quick, I just wanted to say, so we've talked a lot about internally as staff about like trust and credibility from the community, like what builds that, because we feel like some of that's been lost with Parks and Rec. So we're just going to work really hard to communicate to the public about all the things we're doing, get input. We've got a survey out to all our baseball, softball parents right now, just getting their feedback on things. And then I think the committee is a big part of that because they're our conduit of communication to the community of like, if the committee knows the work being put in, and I think they see that now, I think they see the work being done, they'll trust us that we're putting the work in to try to do well, and we have the right intentions with the decisions we're making. And part of that is getting the committee's input on those decisions, too. So we're working really hard to reestablish that. And I'm, you know, we're excited about getting the whole director situation worked out so I can focus a little more on some other things. But right now, I mean, I think we're, I get excited when I think about the things we're doing at parks. So hopefully, the community sees the work being done.
Could I change the subject real quick, and then the last thing I wanted to ask, about the Bunny Davis complex? We've spent a ton of money on the exterior, but what I hear about is the interior and all the issues there. Do we have some, I mean, that's not part of the grand scale, is that something that we are going to try to address?
Yeah, that may be part of that kind of feasibility process of what, because we have to make some decisions about what we, you know, there's kind of different components out there. We've got the pool, which has really been our focus lately of, because it's summer, it's summertime, and it kind of draw my attention when I started looking at it in April and May and working with staff. Internally, like, what is the future of the fitness center? If it's got a long-term future, we need to invest a lot of money into the fitness center. Not just from equipment standpoint, but just the facility itself, the locker rooms, the showers, and all those kind of things. So we've got some decisions to make there, and even, you know, even with like racquetball, even the offices. The offices are very dated. If that's going to be offices for several more years, five more years, we need to make, we need to make some significant renovations. Maybe not so significant, like we've done at the pool, like, hey, just paint some walls. Let's take down some old wallpaper and paint walls and things like that, which is not, not huge cost, but things we can kind of improve the facility in a short-term way. So we're going to look at those things, definitely.
It all sounds good to me.
I mean, and I guess this is the time we make comments or whatever about the, I mean, were you finished? Do we make comments on what we're thinking?
Yeah, go ahead and make your comments, and then we'll kind of wrap up with where, like, our solid next steps that you'll see from us over the next month or so.
I mean, I personally think we need a meeting. We've said, I think the commission has said that from the get-go. We need a meeting with the county, like, tomorrow. And the committee needs to be in on that and staff, in my opinion, sitting at the table, all of us. Because all of us together are going to make it work or not, you know? And I personally, you know, I want to see things move forward, maybe too fast, but I don't want to sit here for two years and do nothing. Like, you know, it said number five is continuing the parking, you know, the parking improvements. Can't we do that sort of in concert with getting the, you know, getting the plans? And then Michael Smith, we had plans, but then I mean, for me, it's like September, October, then we're pushing it that much further down the road. And Jenny Rogers, you know, if we do the pool, you know, you just want to see things move faster. I know that's hard, and you all have got other things to do. But I would like to see some things that can be fixed, like at Bunny Davis. Don't spend a ton of money, but you can paint. Or you can fix some things to make it more, better for them, for staff, just internally, you know? And then our, you know, the little parks, you know, you'd like to see them just do some things. If it is basketball nets or goals or whatever that need to be repaired, just fix them so that the kids can be out there and enjoy them, in the middle of us trying to make these big decisions. Because there's the ones missing out, and that's what it's about anyway.
And they are being used, the little parks, and they are being somewhat programmed by us and by other folks in our community. So there's some activity in all of them, but probably not enough, but there's some. And I find myself going to the little parks that's, I call some unusual times. Six o'clock in the afternoon, seven o'clock. I've been out several times to Millennium, because you all work real well with the Dampf schools and got that activity going. They're having a blast out there. Free food goes a long way to get kids into the park. And I hope a free ticket to the Bunny Davis will get them to the pool. Because once they get started, they're going, I think it'll continue with them. They'll see that, hey, this is for all of us, and they'll start going, so. Lot of neat little things, isn't it? What's her name? I can't think of her name. Oh, Mimi Becker's in the park activities have been received very well. And so there's some stuff going on in the small parks. It's just not every day, and that's not realistic for every day, but there are some scheduled things in all of them. We can do more to them, I'm not sure.
And that's, like, we didn't define that well, but this list, if we're positive coming out of this meeting with this list, this is like the next six to nine months we want to do this stuff. So that's moving forward with these items and starting this work to get these designs started so we can get things moving as quick as we can. These incremental improvements, that's us, we're going to start, you know, I'm talking to Connor every day about things. We're continuing to do improvements. So this is like, this is short-term. This list is very short-term, just to get us started. You mentioned grants earlier. That's one of the key things. If we can get these schematic designs done and cost, and we look at it after the schematic design, we just can't, we can't afford that right now. It doesn't fit within our budget. That's a really good thing for me to provide with my grant applications. If we've done the schematic design, that shows we have, we have invested in it already as a community, and that goes a long way to getting some of those grants. So if we have a stack of projects on a shelf, schematic designs, that's good. That's something we can submit grant applications for, and that's something that you all can look at in the future and say, hey, let's pull that one off the shelf and let's build it. So that's, you know, sometimes we see design as kind of, oh, we're just doing design. But that's, it's a really, that's a very critical step. It's the first step we have to do to get these projects moving forward.
It affects timing. If you just wait for two years till you got the money or you get a grant, you're never going to get anywhere. By pushing design and pushing the project forward, you're more likely to get it done, you know? And you're prepared to do it when the time comes, you know?
All of my comments, I think, are, have been addressed. Thank you, Mark, and the board for, or the committee for being here, and the staff. Very encouraged. We're moving in the right direction. And most of my notes also were exactly what Donna said. You know, what can we address now? I look forward to hearing from the committee quarterly. I hope we can be attentive to exactly what they're requesting. You know, the low-hanging fruit, just painting the benches, the new basketball hoops. Michael Smith, I didn't see lines out there. Just real simple, cheap things can really add to the fun. I can't play ball without a couple lines being drawn, you know? The pickleball fencing, just some benches need, you know, needing painted. Those little cheap things, just the community notices. And, you know, props to how things have been looking at Millennium. So, well done, you guys. Thank you for all of your hard work. You've been hanging in there. And I just want to make sure we're always supporting the Parks and Rec staff, and they can come before us and say, hey, can we get these little things done? So, thank you.
Well, also, we, I'm about teaching the community to be patient as well. My example was the scoreboard, the disaster that got blown out of proportion, you know? It was out there, and nobody, none of the school boards were working. Well, we invested some real good money in the school boards, and by the time somebody got out there to check them out, they were all back working again. So a lot of times, people will overreact to one thing, and you find out that staff's right on top of it. Our staff needs to be told about it so they can get on top of it. And social media, staff should not be required to go to social media to find out about your complaints about Parks and Rec or about City Hall or anything else, but some people think that's how we find out. I don't find out from social media, so there's a, people got to be patient to report stuff to the right people, the right department. I love going to Millennium Park because there's always something going on out there. And when I ride by, unfortunately, after church on Sunday, and the new tennis courts have been used by young and old, you know, it's just really, some things are really happening. I feel good about it. And we've got to get a director here, director.
You don't want me strumming a guitar, man.
Well, I hope it'll be safe to say that when you come back to us with some design bid, and some designing bid documents about Michael Smith, we say, go, move them forward. Let's kick the ball to the curb. And then when you bring back the information about the Jenny Rogers Aquatic Center, then we're all going to go out and find some grant monies and find some citizens who are, one is sitting here already who's going to make a couple million-dollar donation to the Aquatic Center. We'll move some of these things forward, you know? I said one of them is sitting here right now. I looked to the left, Kevin. I didn't look to the right that time, but we're going to get, we've got to get some things done. And you guys are on top of things. We appreciate that.
So what we'll do is we'll, we will, we'll start on Michael Smith Park. We'll start putting bid documents together, start working on those, that project, now that they kind of know the budget. And we'll bring a, I'll have them start preparing a scope and fee for all that schematic design work you see on here. And in the meantime, we'll schedule a meeting with the county so that they, we can have the joint meeting together with them and go over all this as we develop those scopes and fees. So we'll move as quick as we can.
Is there five or six million dollars in the 23, 24 budget directed towards Parks and Rec?
I think we ended up at the five number for now.
Okay.
But I mean, that's something you are going to decide on the projects and scope and down the road.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I understand. And then the other question I have is that, hearing Mr. Morgan make his comments, I'm assuming that the list, these lists of priorities, you all have had some input with these priorities, and you all are on board with this is the route we should be trying to take with the monies that we have?
Actually, we're having a meeting on the 19th, and I was just telling Amber about the agenda that we're wanting some of these on the agenda.
Good, good.
Fill them in and also scheduling our quarterly reports. If you all are in the Fiscal Courts, so they're institution aligned and they're compliant with the MOA.
Yeah.
Are you going to come to our next meeting?
With the quarterly or?
We just talked about that. He told me he'd get with Ashley, and that Ashley would get us on the agenda for it.
I don't know if it'll be the next meeting. I want to talk to the committee on the 19th and get their input on how Dave wants to come, Mr. Kimmich, with the MOA.
Good, good.
I don't want to answer for the committee. I want to put it off the 19th and let them decide.
Thank you. That's good.
You know, the interesting thing is that Coach Kimmich could pay for the whole thing. He just wanted to do it. I don't know. That's the way he is.
Yeah, like Kruger Field?
I just want you guys to understand, you know, Millennium Park is a jewel.
Oh, yeah.
I think we need to make it better.
Yeah, I agree.
We talked about all these other things, the past places. Recently, Millennium Park was built 30 years ago to bring everybody together.
True.
Not separate to the community.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, I hear a lot of talk, we're going to build it up here and we'll build it up here. But we intended to do it this far.
Anything else? Mr. Cody, anything else for your group, your team?
Jim, Chris, no, I think that is all we have to share. Thank you.
Did it so, go ahead.
Sorry, on the Jenny Rogers, I have to ask, on the Jenny Rogers design plan, what are the thoughts of bringing that back?
So we will, we will get a scope, I'll ask them to put a scope and fee together to do the schematic design. I'll come back to you all with that fee, get that approved, and we'll get started.
Okay.
We'll try to do that, probably not at the next meeting, but we'll push. I mean, we need to push maybe for next meeting or the meeting after to get that number in front of you all to get it approved. Like I said, I mean, it's a lengthy design process. I want to make sure that, set the expectation of, I mean, it's going to take some time because there's going to be a lot of moving parts to it. But we will prioritize it, you know, to the best of our ability.
And eventually, you'll have some tentative price tags for all these things on the, because then we can sort of start shooting them off.
We'll get to about, you know, what we call schematic design, about 30% design, and bring back cost estimates for everything to you all to get either the yes to move forward or the no, hold off, and let us think about it.
I was going to say, Mr. Cody sounded good, Dr. Cody. That sounds good. Anyone else?
I'd just say one thing. This is a tribute to Earl and Josh.
We don't want to hear it.
We've seen a lot of improvements to Millennium Park in the last two years.
Yeah, okay.
A lot of improvements.
Any comments you would be done, what a lot of improvements. Yeah. Any compliments for Josh and Earl? We usually don't want to hear them. Thank you all. We've got to have a little fun with this. This is hard work. Got to have a little fun.
Do we need a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I'm looking at that clock. Is that clock working up there? Wow, okay. It's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourned this special call meeting. All those in favor? Oh, wait a minute. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
All opposed? Stay as long as you want to, right? Thank you all. Thank you all.